This is the City of Palac audio system. This is the City of Palac audio system.
Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the City of Palakas Commission Meeting for October 27, 2022. This is a special meeting for us. This is our Students in Government meeting. And so we get an opportunity to watch our young folks at work today. So this time, we're going to call this meeting to order. We'll have our invocation by Chaplain Alonzo Mulberry, followed by our pledge by Mr. Mayor.
Everyone, please stand. Chaplain Mulberry.
Yes, sir. Father, we thank you once again for this day. We thank you for how good you've been. Father, you blessed us to come together once again for meeting tonight. We say thank you. Pray that blessings upon the minds of the people, that the young people learn and watch and observe and do all that they can to be the future furtherance of our city. We pray, God, for everything that will be discussed tonight. That your glory be revealed, your power be set, your knowing be great. Whatever you do, God, in the midst of your people, we praise you and thank you for it in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please, John, to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Tammy McCaskill.
You.
Commissioner Will Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Rufus Boreum.
Present.
Mayor Terrell Hill.
Here.
All members of present and accounted for. We have a forum.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll have approval of minutes from the October 13th meeting.
I make them.
Has everyone had an opportunity, including Commissioner Campbell, to review those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes from October 13.
Thank you.
It's the most on the floor in a second. My commission McCaskill's any further discussion. Seeing that all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Next up is our public recognition and presentation. This is the time that we get to watch our young people at work. And so we're, at this point, we're going to turn the meeting over to our students. Let's get them around the plaza to get situated.
Meeting is now called to order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Simon present.
Commissioner Mattson.
Commissioner Wiggins.
Present.
Commissioner Keeley.
Present.
Mayor Mack.
Present.
Mayor, we have a forum.
On item two A, we will hear from our presenter, Mr. Justin Campbell.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. I am standing before you today as a citizen who has been inspired to come before you all on behalf of the citizens of Palaka. We notice that there is a dire need for extended education after school, resources after school, after school programming. So we're coming before you today to see if there's anything that you would be able to do as far as providing funding to already established programs or create a position within the city that will be solely dedicated to after school programming. As hope, it's our hope that you all will be able to assist the citizens and most of all, the students of this city who will one day sit where you all are sitting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell, for bringing this concern to the commission. I will now open the floor to commission discussion.
I am intrigued to explore the possibilities for after school programs. I would like to hear from the other commissioners.
Commission Keeley.
I believe this is a good idea, but before we make a promise, I believe we need to see if we have the adequate funding.
Commissioner Simons.
I really like the idea of expanding the educational programs outside of the school day, but my only concern is how long will the program be?
Commissioner Mattson.
I also really like the idea, the idea, the idea, but do we have the facilities and the means to begin this program?
Madam Council, is this something within our legal jurisdiction of this body?
This would be within our jurisdiction as long as we do not try to open up our own school. The after school programs would be nice to see as long as, you know, it's not stepping on the toes of the public education system.
City Manager Matthews, is the creation of this program and position within our city budget?
Mr. Mayor, this city has a healthy reserve balance at this time. As you all are aware, this program imposition was not funded this fiscal year. However, if it is the will of the commissions, staff can bring back a budget amendment to allocate fundings for the program before the salary and benefits of this coordinated position.
Commission, you have heard the comments of the presenter, city attorney, and the city manager. I will now entertain a motion.
I make the motion to start, I make the motion to start after school programs.
I second the motion.
We have a motion on the floor which was properly second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in opposition, same side, vote please.
Aye.
Motion passed four to one. See no further business before the commission. Meeting is now adjourned. I'm now bringing the meeting to the mayor here.
For, before we adjourn, can we get a quick picture with the commission? And we'll come down, we'll come down and take, well, just take it right here.
Want to take it here?
They can sit in the seats. They'll sit in the seats. We'll stand behind them. And I wish our meeting was that quick. Counsel, can y'all come up for us? Madam Clerk, can you be in the picture? We'll squeeze.
Can we squeeze?
Squeeze down a little bit. Bring that chair on a little bit.
You want to be in my spot.
Come on, again.
Let's give them another round of applause. So Ms. Krantz, as the students are going back to their seats, can you just give, Commissioner Campbell, give a summation of what goes on for us to be able to put on this, the activities for today?
Thank you, Mayor Hill and Commissioners, for the great opportunity to bring the youth ambassadors before you. As you're aware, the youth ambassador program was initiated this year. This is the inaugural session of the youth ambassador program of the City of Palaka. I'm pleased to report that this program is very well received amongst the school district, teachers, and faculty. And our presentation is going very smoothly. The first couple meetings, I had the opportunity to give a civics, City of Palaka Government Municipalities 101 course. Also gave them a round of presentations on parliamentary procedures. And every meeting, it is the goal of the program to have a different department director come to the meeting and give them an overview of what their department does. The ultimate goal of the youth ambassador program is to teach our students what city government is and to allow them to go back and tell their fellow students what a wonderful opportunity that the city provides for employment and that the City of Palaka is here for them and their jobs right here in our community when they graduate. Thank you again.
And so in addition to what Sunny has already stated, this has been something that the Florida League of Cities has been wanting the City of Palaka to do for a long time. And with the blessings of the commission, more specifically Commissioner McCaskill, who was one of the figureheads in this as well, giving me the blessing to go ahead and start while she dedicated, while she dedicated her time to furthering her education. We were able to commence and what you see today will be the future youth and leaders within this community. They have worked diligently. They have come to special call meetings amongst themselves to make sure that they were prepared for today. And believe it or not, what they came up with, the topic was something that they came with amongst themselves. So we look forward to continuing to have them as the face of our youth ambassadors. And we look forward to having them within the, within the community when we are in the community. And so we thank you all and we look forward to continuing to work with you as we grow Palaka.
Quite simply, if you train a child in a way that you'll have them to go, when they get old, they won't depart from you. What we're looking to do is train these young people to be tomorrow's adults. And this is the first step of many in moving forward with making sure that our greatest investment in this city are the young people that stand before us. And today is another opportunity for us to celebrate our youth as we always do. And so that's where we're moving. We're not moving to it because it's something that we've been doing continuously, but we're going to make sure that we continue to invest and reinvest in our young people so that they can come back and, and want to be in Palaka and raise their families when they return from getting their training and going off to college or the military or wherever, but they want to come back, make Palaka home. And they want to continue to raise the next generation of Palakas. And that's what we're looking forward to doing. And we're just absolutely proud of the work that our young people are doing. So again, thank you guys very much. Next up, student of the month is councilor. So we're going to move into something else. So we're going to do something a little different this month. What we do, our student of the month. We've got a couple of schools that have to get their, to get their awards for me. They have to get their awards. And they have plaques to pick up. We've got a few students who are going to, who were, who are here from last month who were unable to attend because of various events. So we're going to do student of the month this year, accompanying me for student of the month. Mr. Mayor, you going to help me out this time? Hey, I know it's not on your script. I got you. So we're, I'm coming down to you. So first up, student of the month, September 2022. We're going to ask the students to come up. And as the students come up, you will come up with the educators. And you'll assemble across the front of the room. We'll take a picture from the newspaper. Then we'll take breaks so that parents will get an opportunity to commemorate the event. And so first up, we're going to have our September 2022 recipients who were unable to make it before. Ally Norris Hill Crest Academy. Next up, Pinau Baptist Academy. Brianna Jordan. We have a plaque for Hill Crest Academy. And also one for Pennau. Next up, student of the month for October 2022. From Browning Parish Elementary School, Anaya Kent. Children's Reading Center Charter School, Emory Rife. Hill Crest Academy, Naomi Lawson. James Taylor Elementary, Michaela Griffin Johnson. Kelly Smith Elementary, Peyton Meadows. Mr. Griffin will accept Peyton's certificate. From Mellon Learning Center, Pre-K, Council Commissioner McCaskill. Every day is that world. From Mellon Learning Center, K through 12, Evan Hemmott. From Mosley Elementary, Shannon Glisten. Palaka Junior Senior High School, Jaden Williams. I'm going to guess she's related to Michael Speaks. From Pennau Baptist Academy, Darby Speaks. And from Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences, Alana Brown. There's somebody else that looks like you here, right? So first off, I want to make sure that we say thank you to the parents and the extended family members who are here who have invested in these young people. Because it truly takes a village to raise a child. And let's give a round of applause, parents, when you stand before me. And there's another group of individuals who are assembled around this room, some in Zooland as well. And that's our educators who often don't get enough thank yous. They often hear complaints, but they never, they never hear as many thank yous as they deserve. They sacrifice, they spend their own money to buy supplies. We just need to tell them just how much we're appreciative for them investing into our youth and continually pouring into them when we can trust them with it. So again, let's give the educators a round of applause. And lastly, to our students, we are so proud of you. And we are just elated to have you stand before us and be the leaders of the future. Because you are truly the leaders of the future. So I oftentimes say, every time I miss you in the book, I give you the same message. I'm now 50 years old and that seems like I'm ancient. So, but when I was in the third grade with Miss Green, every day we started out the day by saying, I am somebody. If my mind can't conceive it and my heart can't believe it, I know I can achieve it because I am somebody. You guys are somebody great. You're destined for greatness. You are blessed beyond measure and we are so proud of you. So continue to do the wonderful things that you're doing. Continue to be good citizens, make great choices and lead by example. So again, let's give them a round of applause. So at this time, we're going to keep the students up front. And we're going to ask that, until we're going to have our student take a picture, for the newspaper first, and then we're going to take individual pictures. So we'll, we'll take a brief recess so that everyone can get as many pictures as they want. Parents, feel free, when your child's turn comes up, join in and take a picture with them, commemorate the moment as well. So at this time, we're going to stand recess. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting back to order. We'll move on to item 3C, which is proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October 2022. Our cancer center of Putnam is here with us at this time. Dr. Kay and anyone else who's from the cancer center, would you please come forth?
Whereas in the United States, one in eight women and one in 800 men will develop breast cancer in his or her lifetime, according to the National Cancer Institute. And whereas breast cancer is caught early, treatments such as hormone replacement therapy work best and survival rates increase with recommended mammograms and breast cancer screenings that play an essential role in early detection. And whereas this month, as we honor those lost to breast cancer, let us join with the loved ones who celebrate their memory and the patients who battled this disease every day, as well as our nation's advocates, medical researchers and healthcare providers to renew our commitment to better prevent, detect and treat breast cancer. And whereas during Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we recognize all those who know the anguish of breast cancer and extend our heartfelt concern for all who share the pain and difficulties of this disease. Now therefore, I tell Mayor of the City of Palaca, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, you hereby endorse and proclaim that the month of October 2022 is Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Palaca. And we hereby encourage our citizens, private businesses, nonprofit organizations and all other interested groups to join activities that will increase awareness of what we can do to prevent and control breast cancer. And witness where I hereby grant to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Palaca this 27th day of October in the year of our Lord 2022. So moved.
Most of the floor in a second, hold your favorite seat.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor Hill and City Commissioners and City officials and those in attendance. Thank you for keeping this flame alive. And I was reviewing some statistics for an article. And this year so far, from January of this year to the end of September, we had approximately 24 breast cancer patients that we took care of. And the point I want to make is, it so happened, 50% of those women, 12 of those 24, could just have their lumps removed, whereas the remaining 12 required to have their breasts removed. So what that immediately tells me is, we are not really reaching people to get their disease diagnosed early enough so that they wouldn't have to have a mastectomy. Right? So despite, so this sort of thing is very important and I appreciate of all of you for, for being mindful of it. So thank you.
And so, in addition to what Dr. Curvilla spoke of, there's an additional challenge that goes out to the commission as a whole. I think everyone in this room knows at least one person who's been affected by breast cancer. And I think Dr. Curvilla is a gem to this community. His staff, his facility, they're second to none, they're state of the art. And they're committed to making sure that the citizens of this community receive the best medical care possible. But they're also committed to making sure that those patients also have additional needs met. And so, I'm challenging our commission to assist in making sure that the work gets out to the community as a whole. And whatever ways that we can collectively as a commission, as a group within the City of Palaca, to be able to help in those efforts, because it's a community issue. It is a community opportunity for us all to be stewards of a very worthwhile cause. We all participate in cancer walks throughout October. We all have been affected in some way by cancer within our families, within our lives, with our friends. And so, as a commission, we put our thinking caps on and find a way that we can actually help to forward the cause, to make sure that Dr. Kay and his team, as well as the rest of the community, realizes that this commission is there and we're fighting and we're pushing forward to make sure that more people are served in the community and that we can come back and report that of all the cases that they've all been detected early enough so that there wasn't a need for removals. And so, let's, let's make sure that we just continually push forward and educate our community as a whole. So again, thanks, Dr. Kay, for all that you do. And again, we just want to push awareness out. Let's give him another round of applause. Next proclamation is Runaway Prevention Month.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas November is National Runaway Prevention Month. And whereas National Runaway Prevention Month began in 2002 and is presented each year by the National Runaway Safe Line, the federally designated national crisis and communication system for youth ages 12 to 21 who've run away, are considering leaving home or experiencing homelessness. Whereas runaway youth are often expelled from their home, having experienced trauma, struggled to meet basic needs and are at increased danger of falling into high-risk situations, including human trafficking. And whereas together, we can work together to raise awareness, provide support and offer resources for the vulnerable young people in our community. Now therefore, I tell Mayor of the City of Palaca, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, you hereby endorse and proclaim that November 2022 is Runaway Prevention Month in the City of Palaca. And we urge our citizens to advocate for and provide safer alternatives to this vulnerable population of young people and support the effort to increase public awareness about education on behalf of and provide positive and safe alternatives to runaway and homeless youth and their families. And witness where I hereby grant to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Palaca this 27th day of October in the year of our Lord 2022. So moved.
Second. Most of the floor in a second, hold your favorite seat.
Aye.
Aye.
I thank you all again for claiming this month, November actually, National Runaway Prevention Month. As you can see, I did, I did give you a flyer. We're in, CDS is hosting an event to shine a light on homelessness and runaway youth. And I'd love if you'd all attend. It's at Moore Yard, November 10th from 4 to 7. And it's, it's a really important cause. And of course, CDS, you know, it's one of our And of course, CDS, you know, it's one of our main populations of runaways. So we're, it's really dear to my heart. So thank you again for, for the proclamation.
Yeah, I just have one question. Would the, the all those safe place signs be representative of runaway? So they'll know where the safe places are? And if so, can you kind of give us an explanation of that?
Sure, I'm happy to. I guess I'm the safe place coordinator, so I'd love to. If a child, we are a safe place, we're a sins, sins provider. So we are, we are the safe place shelter. But the signs that you see all around town, if a child is out on the street, maybe they ran away, you know, realize that that's not really a great place to be. Or maybe they're being trafficked and they're trying to get away from their trafficker, or just even being bullied at school and are afraid to walk home. For whatever reason, they just don't feel safe, they can go into one of, one of the places that has one of those signs and say, I need help. They'll ask them really basically just, what is your name? What's your problem? And then they call us.
Okay.
And then I will generally go down there and go to them. I'll talk to them on the phone, find out, you know, kind of what I need to do. But I will go there and take, take it over from there, take care of it from that, from that point on. So basically, the safe place is really just someone that knows enough to let, keep the child safe and call us.
Okay, thank you.
Round of applause. Next up is in the spotlight, Ms. Jones, Boy of the Month.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. And once again, I'd like to stand before you, just to speak on our employee of the month. I do want to thank our department heads and staff for their submission forms, the nomination forms that came in this month. We had a pool of seven, which is a step up. However, only one employee will be nominated every month. And so first of all, I'd like to thank our sponsor for this month, our city clerk and human resource department. Boy of the Month this, this round. And so to just acknowledge who it is, is Engineer Matthew Pope from our fire department.
Back up a little bit for us, Pope. He's standing right here.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, we appreciate the opportunity to recognize our employee, Engineer Matthew Pope. For almost seven years, Engineer Pope has been a positive force in our department. He's a well-respected member of our department and the community. In the past, Mr. Pope has been deployed out to the western United States to help on some of the larger brush fires in our history. Most recently, Engineer Pope has been deployed down to help the victims of Hurricane Ian. His dedication and service to our community is unrivaled. As well, Engineer Pope is a master welder. He's helped design and create our new brush truck that we've had in service for a few years now. I invite you to stop down, take a look at his work. This type of talent saves money for our citizens and creates efficiencies that you would normally have to pay for. We have him working for us, so that helps us out. So thank you, Matt. We appreciate everything you do on a daily basis. Thank you.
Congrats, sir. We're waiting on your speech. Always, as always, thank you, guys. Next up, public comments. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. No action will be taken on topics of discussion. Anyone here for public comment, please fill out one of the yellow speakers cards in the back of the room as you first walk in the door. When you come up, give your name and address so that we will have you for that selection. If you're here for general comment, just fill out your card, and it does not need an item from the agenda. If you want to speak as to a specific item, as that item is called, I'll call you up. I have one card thus far for general public comment. General public comment, I've got Mr. Waller, Harold Waller. Would you please come forward at this time? He's from Sharon's Putnam's Bounty.
My name's Harold 111, 149 John DeMaul Road at Rinko Springs, Florida. It's actually in Putnam County. Mayor just won't come to us from Palacka. I'm here to give you all an update. I was here back in April. Oh God, I've taken over the heart of Putnam Food Pantry. So now I'm giving you an update. It's been about six months. I've learned a lot, and it's not hard to put in a food pantry anymore now. We just officially became Sharon Putnam's Bounty. It's a big deal for us because now I'm going to start really trying to grow this a little bit more. Just so you know, we are, we do a relook at everybody that we are giving food to every July 1st. Right now, we have currently at nine hundred and twenty-five families that we're feeding every month. When I came to y'all six months ago, we were giving out food once every three weeks. We've been able to cut that once every two weeks now. But that's about maxed us out for where we're at, at my, with my staff of seventy-year-olds and above. And we, we just can't, I can't bring in that much food into that facility. And I don't have the staff to go once a week. Uh, let's see. I'm now in the process of updating our lease with the city. Got with Eddie Cutright back there a couple of days ago. I guess we're going to try to do a signing on the 11th. What that's going to do for me is that helps y'all out. Because right now, I've been in a hole position because I want to put a new roof on the building I'm in right now. But I can't write a grant for a roof until I have a contract that shows that I'm going to have the building. So once I get that done, I'm planning on immediately going for a new roof on the building. And then after that, I'll continue growing from there, fixing the building up. I'm really here to let you know that I'm, I've outgrown the building already. I need a new building. I'm hoping that we have something that I can possibly fall into when things start moving around because I don't want to be a food pantry anymore. That's why I took food pantry off of it. I want to be a center. There's a lot of people in this town that need a lot more than just food. And I find that out every day, every time we have the doors open, whether it's somebody needing help with their Medicaid, Medicare, SNAP program, or they just don't, they're at their ends, and they don't know what to do next. And they just need to talk to somebody, and there's, they don't know where to go in town to go to that. So what I'm hoping to do is create a center that people can come to when they are, whether they're new to Putnam County or just lost their job, or they have never had help, and they've just never known where to go. I want to have a building that someone can go to, and we can help them from that point of whether it's helping them write a resume, showing them how to get another job. Our goal is to get them from being, having to receive food and not needing that anymore, and getting them off the nine hundred and twenty-five, and getting them better paid so they can go to the grocery store and, and do on their own. And that's all I have to say. If you have any questions.
When did you say the lease is up? You're going to renew it for November the 11th, and you were here six months ago. You said you're just coming to give us an update. But when is the lease up? December. How many, were you feeding six months ago?
Six months ago, when I took over, they said we was doing four hundred. But when I did my first count, we were actually at six hundred, and we were, we were not getting enough food in. And within a month after that, we were at eight hundred. Now, every time we open the door, twenty-five new people, new families are coming in.
You say you do the review once in July, once a year? Or how, how do the families get, get in? Did I miss something?
USDA requires us to go over everybody that we're giving food to because that's who gives us food. We have to get a signature for everything we, that USDA gives us. In order to do that, we have to do a relook to make sure everybody qualifies, or whether they're still getting SSI or income-eligible SNAP. If they got taken off SNAP, then they're not eligible. USDA requires all that to be looked at July 1st every year. Plus, the numbers go up every year on July 1st, which can put some people into the category of being able to get food now.
Oh, so they come in, they sign up once, and then y'all do the re, like a research every year?
Every year, right. They sign up once. Now, they sign every time they come in because I have to take those signatures and give to USDA every month for the food that they give me.
But what about the folks that are not able to come out and get to your building? Do y'all provide any type of services for them? Or do y'all allow them to come in for the research, and then someone else to come pick up the food for them? How do you accommodate?
Well, we have a proxy form where somebody can come in. Let's say you're a homebound.
Yeah.
But your neighbor can come in, and what they'll do is they'll take the form and you'll sign it. And then they'll sign it that they're picking up for you. And from that point on, they can come in and pick up food for you. But when we move into the, the next building, that is one of the areas we're going to start doing, is going to the shut-ins. Not cook food, but the same thing we're doing right now. Because I've got a feeling, if I've got nine hundred and twenty-five people that show up, I've probably got another two hundred and fifty to four hundred that can't even get out the door. So that's why it's so important. And the only thing I know that people are doing right now is God's Kitchen is they're going cooking food seven days a week, but they can only handle one hundred families right now, and they're carrying it out all over the county.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Do we have your information available to make contact with you some type of way? Or you have?
Yeah, we have, we have the speaker guard.
I appreciate it.
Both have it.
Is there anyone else here for general public comment at this time? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. We'll move back into our agenda. We'll go to the item number five, which is consent agenda. So on the consent agenda, we have items A through N. I'm going to ask that EB pool, is there any other item that you wish to have pull from the consent agenda at this time? Any other items besides E and N? Not entertain a motion?
Motion, oh, go ahead. Motion to accept consent agenda items A through N with exception, with the exception of E.
A second.
Exceptional.
E and N. So motion to, motion to approve the agenda minus E and N.
Second.
The second on the floor, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on, item five, E adopt resolution 2022, R 185, authorized change order number two to add the construction of thirty-nine bollards on St. John's Avenue for additive costs of sixty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars for a total cost of one million, eight hundred, two thousand and ninety-seven dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're authorizing execution of change order number twenty, excuse me, two with CGC for the addition of removable bollards on St. John's Avenue in amount of sixty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars for a total contract amount of a million, eight hundred and two thousand, ninety-seven dollars, and providing for scrivener's errors.
Before we move into that, if we can, with the motion, before we move into that, I want to have Mr. Griffith just kind of give an overview. The commission gave him an assignment to check into the bollards. It was something that I asked about earlier, and I think the commission as a whole had an interest, as well as the agency, through the CRA. He's done some independent research on the issue as well.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This graphic, Ms. Tucker was so kind to put together earlier today. What we want to talk to you about is an alternative to the fixed or removable bollards that we were directed to get pricing on. The image at the top of your screen here is the thirty-nine bollards that are proposed with this change order. As you can see, the configuration only lends itself to closing down a portion of St. John's Avenue. Alternatively, the image on the bottom is more representative of what you see with some of our larger festivals and would deploy a removable Jersey barrier that can be filled with water. So we still achieve the safety deliverable of keeping vehicular traffic out of the pedestrian environment, and the city ends up with a much more flexible product that we can use based upon the footprint of the different events that we host. And I will add that it costs fifteen thousand dollars instead of the sixty-four thousand dollars. So we wanted to bring that to your attention and see if this is something that you would rather entertain.
And so I, I think as we look at this, we need a direction from the commission as it related. There's a directive from the commission to bring forward the, the costing as related to the bollards that were, that were looked at. Previously, we, at one point, we talked about the pop-up bollards. And, and really, this seemed to be the ultimate goal, was to try to be able to eliminate some of the need to have police officers as we do parades at certain events in place, or even be able to maximize manpower in other areas and create walkable zones throughout downtown whenever we start having certain events so that we can cut it off to vehicular traffic. And so staff actually did an excellent job in bringing forth an alternative that would be one-fourth the cost of what we were looking at before. But we wanted to make sure that the commission had an opportunity to look at both of them and make a determination. Any comments, concerns, or questions from the commission?
I think the alternative measure is much more smarter. I mean, being physically responsible with our monies and dollars. And he's gone out and conducted the research and given a recommendation that that's the best option to take. I would say go with the cheaper and the cheaper one that can still do the same job as the thirty-nine bollards at a much higher price.
Thank you. Michelle Jones?
Just out of curiosity, how many would you need at each intersection? Would you need?
So if you'll notice there, sir, and I know the image is kind of hard to read from a distance there, but Ms. Tucker was so kind to put the number of barricades that would be required at each one of those points. So at each one of those roads, you need two of those Jersey barriers so that you can't get vehicular traffic through. And you need three bollards and six bollards at some of the roads, like Fifth Street, because you have a wider surface area there.
Any other questions?
The ones at the top, they're the ones that go into the ground, retract?
They don't retract. There's a sleeve, and you, basically, there's a hatch that pulls up, and you pop the bollard in, and then there's a locking mechanism that goes on. So our staff would still have to go out, take the lock off, remove them, and carry them back to the yard.
And then long-term maintenance of the, of the sleeve as well?
And then you, you have to fill the bottom ones, the orange one with water?
Ideally, you would fill them with water so that you would have some protection from vehicular traffic. You don't have to. You know, you can use them just to kind of corral pedestrian traffic. But in these instances, we would most likely fill them with water for safety reasons.
Just thinking about how much, how long it take to fill them up and then transport them? You're going to fill them prior to, or you fill them in the location?
They're filled at the location, sir.
You fill them on site.
Whatever you guys think. I mean, I'm just thinking about from a time standpoint, and the other factor is the, you know, the inflexibility of, of the other concrete bollard, that you have to do so much additional.
Well, the other alternative is what we've done in the past, which is just a combination of signage and cones.
Commissioner Campbell?
I am, I'm all for it.
So you have a resolution in place, which in essence is for the, the traditional bollards, for lack of any other term, as the barricade mechanism. So if we are asking staff to move forward.
We'd most likely just bring back a budget amendment, allocate the funding to make the purchase. You don't have to take any action on this resolution if you don't. You don't have to take any action on this resolution if you don't choose.
But the amount should change, right?
We'd take it down to approximately fifteen thousand, sir.
Oh, here we got sixty-four thousand three hundred and fifty. So, we'll take it down to fifteen.
Just for the purposes of housekeeping, I entertain a motion to, to remove this item from the agenda. This motion on the floor in a second. My Commissioner Jones, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up is a regular business discussion and direction Hank Brian Park. I'm sorry, Andy. I was moving a little fast. Next up is five N. Adopt resolution twenty twenty-two R one ninety-two, release of lien in eleven oh nine Eagle Street. Mr. Cut right before the motion.
All right, this, this property right here was donated to G back in two thousand eight to have a abandoned untagged vehicle. Our records went to two thousand and thirteen in ADG showing that it was still there. The property only passed in between two thousand thirteen and two thousand seventeen with a new property owner took over the property. In two thousand and twenty, when I became the code enforcement, we had a case on that property and no vehicle was there in sight. So, when the lady came and asked us for a lien reduction, we couldn't find no definitive information of how long the vehicle was there. So, with the conversation with the city attorney and the city manager, we felt that it would probably be best to go ahead and release that lien because we have no definitive information in between two thousand thirteen and two thousand and twenty-two. That was two thousand and twenty when I noticed the property myself, that was the vehicle there or not.
Capture please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution of the City of Palacca granting release of lien assessed to eleven oh nine Eagle Street, Palacca, Florida for complaint number zero eight thirty-three, authorizing the satisfaction of the lien which is attached to the effective property and providing for scribners errors.
Second.
Motion for in a second, any further discussion on this? Seeing no, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And so, we're going to be bringing forth some other housekeeping matters in the future as it relates to codes as well as bringing forth the second code officer so that we can address some of those things from the past that have been lingering.
No, just in for future reference, this car right on these liens or anything dealing with a resolution man adopted, could we please have some photos? I understand on this one, but I actually thought it was another residence that's on Eagle Street that actually had a code violation. So, yeah, so, so we'll be able to picture what we're talking about, you know, the infraction as well as the correction.
Just to add to that, we have a picture of that, so that's why.
Okay, moving on, discussing the direction Hank Brian Park.
Yes, Mayor, this is Mandy Tucker, grants administrator, project manager. Ms. Krantz, if you could please start the slideshow. What staff wanted to do was to bring forward some options for Hank Brian Park as far as the grant scope goes. So, the first slide, waiting until it's up. Someone can let me know when it's up. I can't see the screen right now.
It will. It'll be up in about two hours.
Sorry. So, what this first slide is going to show you are, not yet, not yet, okay.
Sorry.
We're there. It's up.
It's okay. Okay, so this first slide shows you seven options for fitness trail equipment stations that staff feels would be utilized there at Hank Brian Park. At the bottom of the slide, next slide, please. At the bottom of the slide, you'll see two, yep, those are the seven options that, that staff would like, nope, go back one, Sonny. So, the images of what you're seeing, nope, back one, Sonny. Nope, this one, right there, yeah. So, the images are showing the actual machines, what they would look like. You can see at the bottom, there's two color combinations that are standard. So, either one of those color combinations and Seth felt like the light green on the dark green was a good blend. For Hank Brian, it, it seems to match the color scheme that we've already got there with the picnic facilities. In addition to the seven stations, we have the station signs. So, at each station, there would be the small little placards that would give the instructions, the ways you could use the equipment. All of these pieces could be ordered, including the shipping for ten thousand nine hundred and ninety. That includes the station signs as well. Then staff is also recommending exercise trail improvement. So, there's already a nice trail in the park, but there's some areas of it that could be improved upon. So, the allocation of the twelve thousand would be for those improvements. Okay, next slide, please. Staff is suggesting putting a fencing around what we've been referring to as the tot area or the smaller children's slide area. The grant also requires new trash cans. So, these trash cans that you see at the bottom are the same trash cans that are utilized throughout the parks at the city. So, the interior pieces would be interchangeable. So, we also had pricing to pressure wash or clean all of the picnic areas, the tables, the benches, the concrete pads and roofs, the play structures, sidewalks, the park signs and the parking lot. We are currently getting a figure for repairing the picnic facilities. There's one bench that's missing its seat and the play structures that are there as well as the demolition of the metal play structures. But staff is confident that those prices will still come in within the budget. So, at this time, the budget of fifty thousand dollars would cover all of these improvements. The lead time on the exercise trail equipment is ten to twelve weeks. So, with commission's direction and approval, staff could place the order as early as next week and delivery would be just after the new year for installation. Be more than happy to answer any questions.
I got one question on the, for, for trash can for twenty-eight hundred, that's pretty, that's pretty expensive trash.
You know, it does seem expensive, but, but it's actually a cheaper, it's a cheaper can than some of the other options that I found out there. It's not just one piece, there's an inner sleeve. They're also mounted to the ground, so they're, it's a little more than just a can. But I, I do, I understand, it does seem steep.
Listen, it, it seems expensive when you're buying those sixty-dollar trash cans that roll out for a pickup on. But you go price trash cans, particularly the metal ones like that, you'll see those trash cans run twelve, fifteen hundred bucks in some places. They are expensive and so, seven hundred bucks is actually a bargain.
Yeah, Mayor Commissioners, there is an alternative to that. At some of our other more passive parks, we do have a, it's a similar style, but instead of metal slats, it is wooden slats. And I think the unit cost on those is, I wouldn't say half, but probably close to half. So, if you wanted to, you know, save a little money there, we could probably, you know, swap that out.
How durable, how durable are the wooden ones?
It's the same, same mounting and everything. It's got a plastic liner. It's just a, it's a metal internal frame with wooden slats, pressure treated, attached to the outside.
But they'll be, they'll last as long as those? Those are similar to the ones that we do have.
They're both just as easy to rip out of the ground.
But, but those are made like that.
But sustainable, I mean.
I know, and I'm, I'm joking. That's the one thing that we combat all the time is people trying to rip them out of the ground.
And that's why I'm more in, you know, I want those because I know y'all can bolt those down. And they're, they sustain the weather really well. I mean, we've had those around our schools, I see, for years and they're still there. Versus the wood slap ones that we'll save money on, just the recommendation of which direction we should go in. I know we want to save a little money, but.
I would just ask.
Up front or?
I would just ask to, just price them both. And I know from a safety perspective as well, looking at the metal, it does get hot during the summer and most of the year in Florida. So, that heat really heats up and if, sometimes you can get burned from the metal. And I think when you look at it from both perspectives, see what, see what.
I, I, I kind of agree. But noting, noting that the structure of those cans are pretty much for rodents wouldn't go into the cans or had a garbage thrown throughout the park. So, that's the, that's my interpretation of why they instructed as such. The second, third question I have is, is this fifty thousand? Is this the same fifty thousand that we were talking about constructing restrooms at? That was a totally different project?
So, that's in addition to what this is. This is just the grant funding, sir. So, we still have within the budget, I believe, the request for the restrooms and we're going to bring that back to you at a later date.
Right. Okay, and so, a comment that since, appreciate staff going out. But one thing that personally I would like to see added in there that in the selection of what we're going to do down there is maybe a second picnic area because that one is small and it actually have the electrical box under the, that one covered area. Could we check and see what a cost of construction would be for a second covered area out there with cost?
Would you like it to have a similar look as the existing pavilion? And are you wanting a covered pavilion or just a picnic slab?
A cover, a small covered area.
It's just like the one that's, the one that's there or the one at Booker.
Right, yeah, or, yeah, either one of those. And the cut cost is just a question probably for Public Works. That forty-eight hundred dollars, is there any way we could cut that cost with utilizing the, our parks staff to go out and pressure wash those areas? I mean, park is not that big and forty-eight hundred bucks, that seems a bit much for outside area.
I believe there's some things that we could entertain for sure. It's just availability, that's it. We can look at what it would cost us to do in-house.
Right. I, I think we should at least explore that option. So, I mean, because if we could save there, we could do some more to the park, is what I'm saying.
Ms. Tucker, you want to break down the scope of what you got there?
Yeah, certainly. Certain areas could be taken out of that pressure washing. The main focus where it started was the picnic areas need to be pressure washed in order to see whether or not the paint needs to be refreshed. It appears that once they're cleaned, they'll be much more appealing in appearance and we may not need to paint them. So, that was the initial thought to pressure wash and we thought while he's out there, to get a bid to do all of it. This, you know, every foot of sidewalk, the entire parking lot. So, of course, that scope can reduce down to where we're just really doing the picnic areas, their roofs and the pads to see where we need to, to work on renovation there. And that might could even be handled, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just saying that, you know, we would be more than, than happy to, to entertain and hopefully get, you know, the cooperation of Public Works and do that in-house if it's possible. I don't know how their staffing level is right now.
All right. I've got one speaker card in this kitchen if you'll come forward at this time.
Allegory Kitchen, seven South Thrift Street, Palacca, Florida. Since the issues come up, I'd like to speak on the trash cans. Even pressure treated wood is going to be attacked by termites and, and different types of insects. So, I would suggest the metal cans. And if they burn somebody's hand, the only one getting burned is trying to steal them and they deserve it. So, stay with the metal cans. I think that's the way to go. Both of them have the plastic liners. But what I want to speak on, and Mr. Jones actually brought it up, you want to save money Hank Brian Park, don't do the permanent restrooms. You had permanent restrooms at the city dock, you had nothing but problems. That's why you removed them. You had all kinds of crime inside the restrooms. You had molestation, you had attacks, you had drug use, you had dire, homeless sleeping in there. You have now put, you're putting out money to do these wonderful portable restrooms to be moved for events. Move the portable restroom to high at Hank Brian Park when there's an event. Don't do the, the, if you do the permanent restrooms at Hank Brian Park, you're going to have the same problems you had at the riverfront and you're going to have citizens complaints and you're going to have a big issue with crime. That would save you money if you use the portable restrooms at Hank Brian Park when they're needed. You don't need it for a little child's birthday party and they think they need portable restrooms and put a, a portalit out there briefly. But you can save money that way. So, I'm just saying, think about putting the portable restrooms at Hank Brian Park if there's a big deal like the Big East Straight Hunt. Otherwise, don't put permanent ones out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public comment on this issue?
On, on the restroom?
No, no, not on the restroom. The restroom's not part of the spread group. Close public comment on this issue, from the comment from the commission. Seeing no further comment, do you have any other issues that you need direction on?
Mayor, all we're asking is confirmation of the scope as presented. And if it's a pleasure of the commission, we would note for staff to entertain in-house pressure washing to save some money and explore the cost of a second covered picnic area. I will tell you that I don't believe that will fit within this scope. But again, what we need tonight is your approval of this scope outline so we can proceed.
Is there a motion to, is there a motion to approve the scope subject to the additions and the comments given by the commission to staff?
So, move.
Motion on the floor in a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on, item number seven on the agenda. Item A, PB case twenty-two dash thirty-three, request to rezone City of Palacca Residential. Single family R one to City Palacca. Commercial neighborhood C one A, approximately point five six acres.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two eighteen, an ordinance of the City of Palacca, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palacca, Florida be amended from City of Palacca Residential, single family R one. The City of Palacca Neighborhood Commercial District C one A for the following property. Four twenty-nine Kirby Street, Palacca, Florida, three two one seven seven Dix map of Palacca map book two, page forty-six, block forty-five, south thirty-eighth, one-third foot west, ninety-nine and a half foot of lot five, parcel number forty-two, ten twenty-seven, sixty-eight, fifty, oh four, fifty, oh oh five oh. Providing for severability, providing for scribners errors and providing for an effective date.
If you remember the first time, there was a denial, there was a motion to deny. It was in place, just so that we'll have a record in that. We're on second reading for housekeeping purposes. Ms. Krantz, anything else?
I was just gonna.
Say the same thing.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you. Got you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion at this point and we'll go into our public comment after that.
Motion to deny, or, um, motion to deny.
There's a motion, there's a motion in a second on the floor. We're now open the floor for public comment. I've got three speaker cards at this time. Ms. Kitchens, you want to come up?
Allegory Kitchen, ten twenty-seven South Thrilt Street, Palacca, Florida. You'll be happy to know this is probably the last time I'm going to come up tonight. I don't think you want to set a precedence that will allow commercial spot zoning to go into my neighborhood and every other residential neighborhood that previously had some type, some kind of commercial use. An individual citizen was denied a conditional use to change their property from single family to multifamily because multifamily is incompatible with the historic district guidelines and not allowed. If you agree to rezone your property, the state property, Hammacall, to commercial C one A, which allows multifamily as a conditional use, you are sending a message that the city gets special privilege over the individual property owner. Please vote no again tonight or the first time on the rezoning change for Hammacall. And I think you might do that, it looks, it looks good, so thank you.
There's a ninety-nine point nine 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 percent chance that's going to happen tonight.
Well, I certainly hope so. It'd take four of you to pass it, so let's go, let's, let's say no.
Got you. Thank you. Janet Pettit. Pettit, Pettit. Let's, let's Pettit. Just give it an address for the record, I'm sorry.
Janet Pettit, at four eighteen Emmett Street, Palacca, in the southeast area. We, in the southeast area, have a particular loving of that particular building and that, that we're speaking of here. And I just want to emphasize that we have a great opportunity to use that to build community. We, today's, today's activities are usually in front of a computer or your cell phone and nobody knows their neighbors. I happen to be in, on Emmett Street and we are rather a community there. But I think that we could use that, that building as a possible community type gathering place. So we could have maybe uh, dances or parties or whatever. And uh, have people get together. There's, I don't know if you've noticed, but the whole country is separated. We have uh, well, one group hates the other and the other hates somebody else. And we need a place where, when I, when I was young and used to visit here in Palacca, very young, I'm, I'm old. And uh, we had a big front porch. And if you'll notice, most of the old houses there have front porches. That's because people used to sit on them. And in summertime, you, you sat out there and your neighbors came by and you invited them in for lemonade or something. And you got to know them. And we don't have anything like that now. Everybody's sitting in front of their computer. And I would just, I would ask that this be considered. That one of the purposes of this would be a meeting place for the community, both in our South Historic Area, but also for Palacca in general, a place where we can, in, in, in uh, a cheap place that, that you could find to, to meet. And, and have an informal kind of get together. There isn't anything like that. I mean, you can belong to the women's club or one of the, the, the uh, groups here. But to meet your neighbors, nobody talks to anybody else. And I think we have an opportunity to do something about it. Thank you. That's, that's my hope and wish. And may not come about right now, but I, I hope that this will be the eventual purpose for that building. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Visna? Lucy Visna? Good evening.
Okay, I'm, I'm actually summarizing the comments from previous letters that I had submitted. Uh, I guess I got to give my name and address.
Yes, ma'am.
Lucy Visna, eight one nine Laurel Street, Palacca. Okay. The following comments summarize my previous letters. I and many others in the district and community oppose the rezoning future land use application for the Hammacall Community Center and the two vacant parcels referenced in PB case number twenty-two dash thirty-three. Number one, it is inconsistent with the city's comprehensive plan and land development code since it constitutes that zoning. Number two, it would set a land use and zoning precedent. As the Hammacall Community Center is located in a national designated historic district, which is designated a single family residential neighborhood. Res zoning to commercial is inconsistent with this surrounding neighborhood. Number three, the safety of the residents and paths are compromised when creating commercial activity in a well-established residential neighborhood since any commercial vehicle access to a major traffic route involves having to navigate the narrow streets of the existing area. Number four, for years now, our entire district has had infrastructural activity resulting in detoured traffic, roads blacked off and sidewalks being torn up. Meanwhile, large commercial vehicles, well exceeding the size and weight limits for the area, are traveling down these same roads causing additional problems. Number five, the city has other identified sites which would make better sense for future commercial development. Hammacall does not fit into that category. Please consider the historic integrity of the district, the potential negative impacts to the neighborhood and the single family land use and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Seeing no one. Oh, you're coming, come up, you can just come up, you can fill out later.
Burnt me, eighteen Laurel Street. Uh, I guess at the last meeting, Mr. Borum made reference to an MSBU. Sort of got glossed over in the whole thing after your vote was to deny. Since someone elaborate on what an MSBU is. I, I have a general idea. It's another ad lori tax that we really don't need. But I think it's something that needs to be brought to the attention of the South Historic District and everything involved. And then we are such a dysfunctional association. I, I think something needs to be done. I don't know what the determination, what the next step will be when you, ladies and gentlemen, vote tonight as to what the next, next process is. But serious consideration needs to be given not to turn it over to the South Historic District. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Borum, you want to respond?
That was just an alternative based on um, what I'm thinking. If, if a specific area normally benefits from um, a particular thing, whether it's a building service or whatever it may be, maybe, you know, it could be road improvements or whatever. But if it specifically benefit that unit and uh, that unit would, that area would be contributing to pay for those that building or that infrastructure improvement or whatever it may be. So that's what a municipal service benefit unit is, is to benefit a specific area or particular thing and it does not go out to the general uh, tax populace. Uh, that's my understanding of it. Am I right? Um, counsel?
Sir, I'm not that well acquainted with it, but I can check and find it.
But um, that's, that's my understanding of it. So is, that's what.
Mr. Griffith said that's his understanding of it all.
Yes. So uh, that was the alternative to the original thing that Mr. Allen uh, brought forth in terms of the uh, the city and the South Historic District working out a MOU to do whatever with the, with the property. So that's what my alternative was to that, so.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any, well now, is there anyone else here for public comment on this issue? All right. Same. He's filling it out for you already.
We are over at three twelve Dodge, completely confused pertaining to what the alternates that you're presenting for the future of Hammacall are.
There are no alternates presented right now. That was just something that Commissioner Borum spoke of. It's not on the agenda.
Okay, okay. So where do we stand this neighborhood pertaining to?
It doesn't exist tonight as far as what we're doing. We're only voting on the issue of the rezoning and what's on the agenda for tonight.
Okay. Okay. So at this, it would just be tabled or do we have?
It's not tabled. It's, there's a motion on the floor to deny the rezoning. As we sit here, there are two other items that will be voted on. And if I was a betting man, I would say that they're going to go the same way. And so the rezoning is going to, more, more than likely, uh, substantially more than likely be denied. At that point, uh, the property remains as a, remains residentially zoned.
Okay. And it will still be city managed?
It's city owned.
City owned, okay.
It's city owned. It'll continue to be city owned. Um, the next steps, the last time we were here, I think the conversation was to, to sit down and talk to the um, to talk to the South Historic Neighborhood Association. Uh, we've had some conversation, but we're open to conversation um, to see what solutions out there. We're solution driven. So everybody brings a problem, but we just need people to bring a solution. And so um, that's where we are, but that's not on the agenda tonight. And so it won't be the conversation for tonight.
Okay. Well, the only question I have is, uh, if you are discussing anything with the South Historic Neighborhood Association and certainly not being conveyed to the neighborhood itself, um, it's very much a closed door circumstance.
So, so what we're doing, uh, one of the things that was suggested is that we send communication out to, I think it's roughly a hundred and fifty residents within the entire district uh, to send communication out to everyone to let them know so that they'll be, um, so that we can, um, so that it won't be an isolated situation with just a handful of residents making the decision for. I'll put it that way. So I think the communication last time was like twenty-two people were present. So we want to make sure we get a greater, a, a greater cross-section of the district. So this, so that everybody has an opportunity and just make sure the communication goes out to everybody.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And you can get Mr. Cut right and he'll make sure that he has you on that list when those communications go out. Thank you. All right. Um, you've, you've heard it. We'll now close public here, public comment. Is there anyone else here for public comment? It's now closed. Is there any further discussion from the commission?
Question.
Question's called. All in favor say aye. All right. Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on to order number twenty-two dash twenty, second reading.
Thank you again. An ordinance of the City of Palacca, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palacca, Florida be amended from City of Palacca Residential, single family R one, City of Palacca Neighborhood, Commercial District C one A for the following property. Six maps of Palacca map book two, page forty-six, block forty-five, lot five, excluding south thirty-eight feet of the west ninety-nine half foot of parcel number forty-two, ten, twenty-seven, sixty-eight, fifty, oh four, fifty, oh oh, five, one. Providing for severability, providing for scrubbers errors, providing for an effective date.
Motion to deny.
Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. Public comment. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Rock. Moving on. Orders twenty-two dash twenty-two, rezoning.
Thank you again. An ordinance of the City of Palacca, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palacca, Florida be amended from City of Palacca Residential, single family R one, to City of Palacca Neighborhood, Commercial District C one A for the following property. Six maps of Palacca map book two, page forty-six, block forty-five, west sixty-two feet of the lot four, parcel number forty-two, ten, twenty-seven, sixty-eight, fifty, oh four, fifty, zero, zero, four, zero. Providing for severability, providing for scrubbers errors, providing for an effective date.
Motion to deny.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. Open the floor for public hearings. Anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye. Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to HBP, HPB case twenty-two dash eighteen, Noah's Ark.
An ordinance of the City of Palacca, Florida, designating the vessel known as Noah's Ark. It's a local historic structure and supporting and endorsing the application for nomination for listing in the National Register of Historic Places, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, providing for scrubbers errors.
Second reading for adoption. It's your motion. There's a motion on the floor. There's, there's a second by Commissioner Borum. For now, on the floor for public hearings. Anyone here for public hearing? You can fill out one from your layer. Come on forward.
Reverend Correa, one eighteen Dodge, I just want to thank Commissioner Correa for approving the application or the submission of the application for the National Trust on behalf of, in particular, Jim Stady, who was the chairperson of our Noah's Ark Restoration Committee and passed away on September sixteenth, rather rapidly from leukemia and missing daily, but in honor of him, I thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public hearing at this time? Seeing no one, we'll close public here. Is there any further discussion from the commission? All in favor say aye. Opposed motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Next up, HPB case number twenty-two dash eighteen, Palacca Water Works.
Thank you, sir. An ordinance of the City of Palacca, Florida, designating the city property known as Palacca Water Works Environmental Center is a local historic structure and supporting and endorsing the application for nomination for listing in the National Register of Historic Places, providing for severability, providing for an effective date and providing for scrubbers errors.
So move.
Your second.
Second.
There's a second by Commissioner Campbell. Public comments. Anyone here for public comment? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Is there any further discussion at this time? All in favor say aye. Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you guys for being here. Uh, it is now six thirty in Alabama. City manager and administrator reports comments. Mr. Griffith, in an absence of city manager, I'm going to you first.
Mayor, thank you. Um, I'm going to address this item that's um, under number eight here. The uh, project progress update, about fourteenth, fourteenth street and South fifteenth street drainage. Um, the current deadline is still November twelfth based upon the last thirty day extension. Uh, you may recall what they committed to us last time was to have South fourteenth street um, to punch out. Um, unfortunately, the contractor did miss that mark. Um, however, they have progressed in some area, other areas of the site. And they missed that mark based upon some subcontractor delays, mainly uh, the concrete subcontractor. Uh, but I'll report that fourteenth street Crush Creek, first and second lift are done, so it is ready for asphalt. From fourteenth to fifteenth street, the second lift of Crush Creek is done, so it is ready for asphalt.
When can we expect that, sir? When can we expect it?
Uh, they're shooting to have asphalt by the end of November now. Laurel Street has the first lift of Crush Creek in. They're waiting on the second lift. And Laurel from fourteenth to fifteenth street, they're expecting to lay down the second lift tomorrow and this weekend. Fourteenth street, another item that they missed the mark on, they were supposed to start today and the subcontractor did not show up for, was what's called the flatwork, that is sidewalks and driveway pores. Uh, we're hoping to get a report tomorrow that subcontractor shows up. Fifteenth street curb straight runs um, are scheduled for November second, that's next week. And the car street curb is prepped, um, but subcontractor did not show up. Uh, so we're expecting that to occur uh, from November second to the third next week.
And that's different curbs, that's, those are different curb subs from what's going on with Landmark.
Yes, sir.
Got a question. Um, when, when the contractors and subcontractors don't meet those timeframe, do, do we have any clauses in there where there's uh, any penalties or anything like that where?
Liquidated damage clause? Liquidated damages clause?
Yeah, we, yeah, we need something in there to where, you know, it's not constantly impacting us moving forward with different projects because the, the more we continue to wait on them, if it's not something that's uh, we can't get like material or whatever it may be, then we constantly work on their performance. If they, below the performance, we might need to consider using somebody else.
So i- if I could add to that, sir, just for clarity. We have liquidated damages with the prime contractor, which is DB Civil. What I'm reporting to you on, on these specific dates and measurables is not typical of an arrangement between the city and our contractor. What we leave to them is means and methods. So they set their schedule, they advise us. But this project is far past its original deadline. So what we're doing is coming back to you and we're reporting every week and we're asking for more specific deadlines. And we didn't want to hold anything back. While they missed the mark on those few items, they did move over to other areas of the project site and keep advancing work. So that is a positive note. We'll be back in front of you on November tenth, which is in advance of the contract current deadline. Hopefully with a positive report, because I think everybody just wants a, a brand new road and it closes this thing up.
Right.
Um, but um, didn't want to short it, that's all.
All right. So yeah, and so in the full scope of things, what, what you're saying is they're not holding up, you know, project. They got other things that they can continue to move forward while they.
They're just shifting. They're, they're shifting on the delayed up. Other thing is, if you look at fourteen, you know, if you look at the whole area as to what we typically have um, during storm incidents, during heavy rain incidents, it held. It, the work that was done in place, even with the base just being there, it's held and you didn't have the flooding in the area that you typically would have. So um, that's kind of where we are.
Appreciate it. Thanks for.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
The real and the true update.
Counsel, you have anything?
No, sir.
Ms. Jones? No. Mr. Cut, right? Make sure he's limited to two minutes, please.
Three minutes, three minutes. Now, I just want to elaborate on the situation and Commissioner Jones was bringing about the cases and ADG. What we're looking at trying to do is bring somebody in, get some contractor or anything. We have fifty-seven hundred ADG cases, code enforcement cases, ADG, and a lot of small cases from grass and debris to abandoned vehicles that hasn't been closed. and a lot of small cases from grass debris to abandoned vehicles that hasn't been closed down. And what we want to do is try to get somebody here to kind of close these out, because that's, this, the city attorney, we start trying to abate or foreclose property. These lanes are becoming to the forefront and people trying to stay or close these lanes out, and it's hard for me to regulate something that's day back to two thousand and two and has sketchy documentation going forward. So that's what we're looking at trying to do. Can't help turn it up. Going forward, anytime we bring a lane, we break some before and after pictures, so you'll see what we're.
I appreciate that, Mr. Cut. And, and on that, on that note about staffing or contracting, have you even considered cross-training personnel to try to, I mean, accommodate or, you know, when something is slow, some areas are slow, like we're not having enough, I don't want to.
What, I can, I can.
Point anybody.
We have a sort of sixty-five, so along the way, we have slow days, we've been trying to knock them off, myself, David, Aaron, and we're trying to bring Rico in once he get kind of caught up with fields and everything. So we're doing some cross-training to a certain extent, but we just need somebody to get in there for about three months to dedicate themselves for eight hours a day of just really cleaning those out, because you have to read cases, go out and see the property, and then come back to make an assessment of whether we can close it out or not.
I got you. And I, I want to say you guys are doing, making great strides, and we see the actions, and as a matter of fact, I want to give kudos, while you're up here, to code enforcement, law enforcement alike, went out to a case where we, we had a case with some squatters, and made a call to the chief police, chief police looking into it, got code enforcement involved, you guys went out and took care of the issue, and I got a lot of calls from community that said that our commission was responded as well as our staff, and I really appreciate it, because when y'all, y'all make us look good in those cases, you know, I mean, they're calling us and, and you guys responded right away. I want to give you, I think the fire department went out too one day because they had a fire at that place. So I want to give all you guys kudos and appreciate you.
Okay.
Keep up the good work.
Mr. McNair.
Rennell House, Rennell House, that was Rennell House.
Yeah.
Commissioner, Mayor?
Thank you, sir.
One item. So for the ballots of this week, the airport would be seeing a lot of increased activity with parachuting. So the Round Canopy, skydiving team is working on some training sessions this week, so you'll probably be seeing a DC three aircraft operating at the airport as well as helicopter. So that should wrap up about five to six o'clock Sunday evening. It's not, it's not a fly-in. We've been getting a number of calls about flying, it's weakening up, it's not, it's a training session. So, you know, it's just going to be a lot of activity, but I just want to give you guys a heads up to, you know, if you guys get any calls or, or.
Thank you. And there, there, pretty good progress is being made. I see the frames are up for the T-hangers.
Yes, certainly, um, you know, frames up, you know, they're, they're, they're coming together, the weather's been great. So, um, you know, I believe the month was January, first part of February completion time, so, hey, we, we're really getting forward to having some new facilities at the airport and working on some other things, so a lot of things going on.
They have, Blue Angels had a fly-in over in Jacksonville. Can you do anything remotely close to that, for us here in Placot?
Takes a little time.
Good answer.
The remotely close would be proximity.
Ms. Grace, we, we don't normally have you around, but you want to, for, for our commission meetings, you got anything for us? We keep putting beautiful, anything new going on? It's always a pleasure to have you here. We don't, we don't, we don't, we don't get this blessing all the time, so come on up.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I do watch on Zoom quite religiously, but I can put it on one by five when I watch it, so everything goes very quickly, even those ones that last till ten o'clock at night, so. I'm watching. I, I do have some that's interested in the donations in the city, and I'm going to be contacting administration about it. I just got the call at four thirty, so Madison Street all the way through, so. I hope, I hope.
Thank you.
But, yeah, everything's going great, and I'm going to be taking a ride on the golf cart through the trail, through the, the urban trail through the city as well, so things are moving. Thank you very much.
Be happy to assist with anything.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Chief Shaw.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. I had Ms. France place the NIBR statistics in your package, so I'm ready to answer any questions that you may have for, for the NIBR's report. And if I can't answer them now, I'll be, I'll gladly make sure I get back to you on those questions, answer to those questions at a later date.
Has it kind of stuck out? I thought maybe it was last year, but I guess we can look back at them, but that was kind of awkward for putting kind of with human trafficking, and I just noticed it wasn't this one, but if you can look back.
I'll definitely look into it. I'll, I'll give you a call and let you know. I don't remember one right offhand, but I'll look through it for last year's.
So, I, I guess a couple of things kind of stand out. Even with things that have gone on in the community, this is from January twenty-twenty-one to October twenty-twenty-two, correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
So your homicide numbers are down twenty-five percent?
Yes, sir.
And even with the, the events that took place, March and April, your violent crime numbers in some categories went up, but in total violent crimes, you, you only went up sixteen percent with the, the multitude of events that took place during that time?
That's correct. We are up in some areas, violent crimes, we are, where we're normally up in simple battery, we're down. Aggravated, aggravated battery and aggravated assault, as you can see, is up. And those incidents from the beginning of the year did drive our violent crime up as it stands right now for sixteen percent.
And then, so, I mean, I guess contrary to popular belief, your total crime number is down eighteen percent?
That is correct. Total crime for the city of Placot currently is down eighteen percent.
So I guess that's a number that we need to make sure we get out there, because I guess their perception is reality. For some people, they, they believe that crime is up in Placot when crime is actually down eighteen percent. So. Go ahead, Commissioner Jones.
No, sir, I'm sorry.
No, I, I just wanted to make sure that we were, that the numbers were, were highlighted on some of these things. I know as we looked at them and, you know, we knew we had a period where it was crazy, for lack of any other term, where it was just, just kids who were, you know, event after event after event, shooting after shooting, even with those things in place, you still are showing a significant decrease in crime based on your, your NIBR's.
But, but, no, but, as I look at the robbery and assault, it's up two hundred percent along with aggravated battery up a hundred and twenty-seven percent, so how do you get those numbers, because?
So, a- as you can see, it's, it's measured to the previous year, so percentages, when you look at your percentages, you're, you're basically averaging out from current year against the previous year. So when you say a hundred and twenty-seven percent being up, you're actually looking at twenty-five opposed to eleven previous year. And, or you're looking at twelve this year opposed to four last year. So the overall numbers are not something that you get as recent or as much as simple battery, where it's a hundred and twenty-six this year opposed to a hundred and thirty-two last year.
But that number.
So the basic math, the basic math, if you basically provide it into, by this year and the last year, invited by one, you'd get your percentage.
But the other thing, if you remember, that stood out from the past was at the point where you had all that activity going on, that you were up six hundred percent.
That's correct.
For, you know, for a quarter, and then you, you started this, you're, now you're seeing this number trend down, because the incidents are, are decreasing.
That's correct. So it may be on some instance, it may, it may show where the, there's not as many, many incidents in the category, but when you divide them into each other, when you compare them to each other, your, your percentage rate is higher given it a new year, and it even, it can even be by two, by two cases can drive it up, a, a large percentage.
A stony number.
But I, but I, I think the, I, I think the nutshell of it all is, I mean, it's not necessarily, I think anytime you have any violent crime, it's, it's an opportunity for us to get better at it.
That's correct.
And I think the efforts have been put in place. I think the, the critical piece now is to continue the efforts to get guns out the streets, to, to create additional activities for these kids, for our citizens as a whole, to make sure we're identifying the mental health issues that are out there, because a lot of this stuff is, is based upon mental health, a lot of it's based upon socioeconomic, it's based upon a gang of things, and it's interrelated with some of the school activities, interrelated with things that are taking place in certain neighborhoods or all around the city for, in, in many cases, but I think we got to continually just push forward, be proactive, be, and have a collective process, but also creating alternatives and empowering citizens and communities to be able to have resources and people that they can go to. And so, you know, having to pop up, you know, having to pop up events in communities, continually having the engagement with the faith-based community, all those things, community-oriented policing, same stuff that went on for a number of years, I think is really the key to all of it, but it's community engagement as well, and, and we all got to be a part of it.
And just to add, as you know, that we're looking at crime-prevented measures, equipment that we can bring in and help us with the, the cameras that we just talked about the last meeting. But just to add to that, and also discussions with the state attorney's office and assistance through ATF, we are looking at them coming down and helping us to test fire all weapons that we were able to get off the streets. Not only weapons associated to crime, but any weapons that we seize in the streets, which ordinarily wouldn't be done, we're going to be test firing to see if we can connect them to any other crime that was committed before being seized. So methods and joint cooperation through different agencies is being put in place to where we can attack the violent crime on different levels.
Anything else from the commission?
Well, just, yeah, with this last classification, offenses at the very bottom, you know, you got the stalking, arson from, from a human, the, the other miscellaneous, what, what is that category? What, what would entail some of those?
So all of the crimes, as it, as it occurs, when you look at UCR, UCR, all of the crimes wasn't considered, with NIBR, it's brought into effect with all of the crimes, such as drugs, such as, things that are basically used to be part-two crimes, UCR, are included in NIBR, so those are included and had simple category.
Okay, sure.
Commissioner Jones, is there, I guess, an area we need to look at and get back with you on?
Yeah, no, I'm just looking at the breakdown of the violent crime. Everything else is, is okay.
I'll, I'll review it and, and look at the numbers.
Yeah, I didn't get, I didn't get the same numbers, but I like what you said about how we trying to combat the violent crimes, because that is a concern, the violent crimes in the area. And I know, like the mayor said, we had a, a time where it just kind of got out of hand, and I am glad to see the efforts that you guys have made to actually curb the violent crimes. And I know last week, we talked, our last meeting, we talked about the Harriet on Eighteenth and Reed Street. And hopefully, you and Mr. Vickers got together, and you got to follow up on that, did you guys get together?
Sure. We did meet, uh, Thursday, myself, the city attorney, as well as the city manager. We had a very good meeting, in, in my opinion, but both, we, we both agreed to come together. Mr. Vickers is going to make some changes, we're going to make some changes in how we respond, and I think it's going to be very productive. So we did reach some agreement, and we're going to continue to put those things in place from here on out.
Glad to hear that.
On that, on that part of it also, can you, maybe once you, once you start that process with Mr. Vickers, we kind of send the same thing out and get some more entertainment, all the entertainment spots within town, have, see if we can maybe create some type of collaborative effort from all, from all the, the shop owners together?
We are, we already meeting with Dean Still, we've had some calls from Dean Still, so we're already scheduled to meet, to sit down with Dean Still and discuss some of that stuff on the issues that they're having on the property as well.
Right, okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. Anything else for chief? On this issue?
Nothing else on the crime unless you guys have any additional questions.
I do have one more.
Yes, sir.
Are those tag readers across the bridge, are those the ones that we, as a city, purchased?
That you brought that up, sir. As, so far as yet, we have not purchased the tag readers, but those tag readers that you see are across the bridge are something that we are looking at bringing back to you. Original cameras that we brought to you were only tag readers. What we want to bring to you is a tag reader as well as a motion camera, and it's going to be within the
same number.
For the same number of cameras, but talking to Mr. Griffin, I want to be able to present it to city manager and allow for the city attorney to review the proposed, the proposal before bringing it forward, to ask for permission to purchase. But it is within the same area, it just gives us a larger option. What it does is instead of reading on reflection, which is just a tag, it goes off the motion, and it also allows us to search, it has a broader search, so if I'm looking for a suspect vehicle, and all it has is a bumper sticker, that allows me to search for within all the, the queries, that, that vehicle within itself. Not only the county right now is going into them, but it also allows HOA's apartment complexes to also be able to purchase the same kind of cameras, and we are able to use them for that purpose, and we've, we're in discussions with a couple of organizations throughout the city, looking to hopefully move forward with the assistance of them purchasing them as well.
And you can sync those with regional, with, with different, with other agencies that use similar technology?
Outside agencies as well as the county as well.
Right, and they're going to be in the city limits, they?
They will be in the city limits in various different areas throughout.
Thank you.
Okay.
On, on, outside of that, we have no more questions on crimes. We can move forward to our onsite, on November first to third, accreditation onsite will be occurring at Black Police Department. We will have official accreditation assessment. The accreditation confirms our pursuit to the highest level of professionalism, operational transparency, and a desire to maintain excellent law enforcement. Three assessments from throughout the state of Florida. We'll be here to conduct electronic cloud reviews, performing interviews, going on ride-along, looking at training, vehicles and equipment, and pretty much anything else that basically can help show what type of department we're running currently, and that we meet the standards of accreditation. That'll be coming in on November first to the third, as you are aware, and obviously with our mock, we passed our mock, and so we're looking forward to the assessment, and we believe we will come out okay and approve moving forward for the February appointment.
Okay. Um, got some events this weekend?
Yes, sir. First, starting off the event, you must know what I know. First, first starting off the events, we have the Fall Festival, it's going to be on Saturday, followed right after the Pink Walk, which is the eight o'clock in the morning, Fall Festival will be starting at ten AM to two PM, and again, it's the annual event, it's going to be down at the riverfront. Multiple different organizations that's going to be there, food, fun, fellowship, please join us at the Fall Festival. Following the Fall Festival, as you all know, we have Truck and Tree, Truck and Tree is going to be Monday, following Buon Avenue. It will be at the riverfront from five to eight, and as usual, we usually get a very strong turnout from the commissioners, and I'm just not actually not to get too amped up with sugar, and to expand all the candy within the first hour.
Everybody to my left? Listen, is, this is, it's typically my right side, but this time it's the people on the left who get a little hyper.
Very generous.
Don't be in the roadway. And what, Commissioner, you got about four thousand people, so you got to limit what you do with the candy.
I couldn't have.
We are expecting, being that we're going to be in conjunction with Buon Avenue this year, following right behind it, we are expecting a very large turnout again this year. We, we have a number of different things that were combined with the event to have. We got contacted by multiple citizens within the city, and also business owners who wanted to be able to participate and be able to provide some service, so we are really looking forward to a great event.
Wow.
Anything else, chief?
No, sir, that's it.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
It's now seven o'clock in Alabama. Anything for revitalized? It's now seven o'clock in Alabama, anything for Revitalize, I've got, I've got, I've had, keep putting the beautiful here, you got anything for Revitalize for us? Uh, Ms. Walsh? Chief? Really? Ms. France?
Um, just a couple of things briefly, um the Mary Lawson Brown Marina dedication is scheduled for November the fifth at five. At the Water Taxi Terminal Building, um we're looking for the public to to come as well as our commission, of course. Um, refreshments, light refreshments will be served afterward, I will admit, the three of the youth ambassadors have actually um. Been asked to sing the national anthem, so when you were talking about singing, I was like, oh, that's to come, I'm some very funny news guys. I am, nextly, just to mention briefly, a new planning clerk did, did start this week at City Hall. And the planning department's doing an excellent job of training them.
Mr. Dennis?
Nothing to report from the gas authority, sir, things are good.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Campbell?
In the words of Whitney Houston, I have nothing.
All right, Ms. McMillan, already went through. Did I, 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 I got you right, Ms. McMillan? He was early in the process. I'm sorry, Commissioner Campbell, I didn't hear you.
In the words of Whitney Houston, I have nothing.
I wasn't necessarily prepared for that quote, Commissioner Jones, top that.
No, I, I do have a couple of questions for the department here. Um, and for consideration for the entire commission, and first is uh for the. May, for the city manager, however, Jonathan, I mean, Mr. Griffith is sitting in. Uh, want to know the update on the strategic plan, we haven't spoke about that after we have done that several months ago. Um, wanted to get an update on where are we with it, you know, we're moving forward. With things in the city, but we haven't gotten that concrete, do you have any update on that?
Let's just put it on the next agenda.
We can, we can do that, we can put it on there for discussion at uh the November tenth agenda, sir.
Okay, so the vendor got back with us already?
Say again, sir?
Have the vendor that's supposed to be completing that strategic plan that we already.
So if you're speaking in reference to the plan that we did with the Northeast Florida Regional Planning Council, uh it was completed, a commission accepted. And it was transmitted to DEO to wrap up the grant scope of work. The next logical step is probably to review the strategic plan, uh in addition to tracking the status of the legislative priorities that were recently set.
That's a part of talking about, yeah, alright, um, the second. Line of question I have is, if we uh, have we had any progress with the John's medal? And um our efforts there, I know code enforcement, law enforcement and administration have started. I would like to know where we are with that.
So, no, I I'll take this. For the purposes of not doing this in the public forum, I ask you to get with counsel after this so that you can talk about that, and I just. It doesn't need to be discussed in the public forum.
Alright, um, counsel, would you get with me on that? Alright, um, then the last thing I have is the, no, that's HR, but I'll wait. Well, HR, can I skip the HR? Um. I'll do that outside, but before too. Alright, that's all I have.
Commissioner Moore?
I have nothing.
Commissioner McCaskill, I think, I guess she, she stepped out for a second.
Being, Commissioner Borne didn't want to announce it, may I on his behalf?
You can.
Um, Commissioner Borne has recently made the president of the Northeast Florida Reach, uh Northeast Florida League of Cities. I was about to say Regional Council, so sorry, I just wanted to give this.
Congratulations. You're supposed to report that.
Uh, it was, I mean, don't take over to December, but I appreciate that, um, they, they sent it out, so. I just want to uh thank everybody for all of their support, uh I thank the commission for um allowing me to serve on that board. And uh, again, I'm just trying to do whatever I can to represent the board, the city and uh everybody who visits, so. Thank you, guys.
Also, Commissioner Borne also just, just won his election, his opponent was Drew, so he's in for another term.
Appreciate it.
Commissioner McCaskill, got anything for us? Not so much, so we are, so since chief took up all the time, I don't have any comments for tonight. We uh, we're just moving forward, it is now eight, it is now seven oh five and out.